This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Wednesday, May 4th, 2022 South Whitehall Township Board of Commissioners meeting. I'd like to call this meeting to order. I do want to state for the record, all commissioners are present this evening except for Commissioner Brad Osborne, who is absent. If you would all please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'd like to announce that all public sessions of the South Whitehall Township Board of Commissioners are electronically recorded, filed, and posted to the website for public access. Randy, if you would please review the public and virtual meeting rules for this evening.
Sure. Courtesy of the floor for non-agenda items will be at the beginning and the end of tonight's meeting. For all listed agenda items, the board president will call for courtesy of the floor prior to the board of commissioners taking action on that specific agenda item. For in-person attendees, please raise your hand to be recognized, then move to the podium when directed. You'll be asked to state your name and address for the record, and may then proceed with asking your question. For those participating virtually tonight, please keep your microphones and telephones on mute to avoid any background noise that may cause interference with tonight's meeting. The chat box feature will be active throughout the meeting. If you have a comment or question, please type your full name and address into the chat box, and the staff member monitoring go-to meeting will then unmute your microphone, and you will then have the opportunity to ask your question. Thank you.
Thank you, Randy. I would like to announce that the Board of Commissioners met an executive session for personal matters on April 19th and April 22nd. Before we move on to courtesy of the floor, we do have a recognition that I would like to move to the top of the agenda tonight. We're recognizing one of our South Whitehall Township employees for 32 years of service, and I would like to ask Herb Bender as the Public Works manager to come up and introduce.
Good evening, commissioners. I'd like to introduce Joe Herple here. He has done 32 years in South Whitehall Township, all in Public Works. Joe is a great employee. He was a great crew leader for us downstairs. When I first came on board three years ago, Joe took me under his wing, showed me some of the areas that we had issues with. I couldn't got to where I am today without Joe's help. Joe is a great leader to our employees downstairs, and he's going to be truly missed. He has a lot of knowledge of this township and our infrastructure that is there. Again, I can't thank Joe enough for everything he's done for me and for the township and for the citizens of South Whitehall.
Thank you, Herb. Before we give him an opportunity to speak, I did want to just formally thank you from the Board of Commissioners and certainly from our staff and our community. I want to extend our heartfelt thanks for your dedicated service. We appreciate the 32 years that you've contributed to help make South Whitehall a premier township, and we appreciate the contribution you've made. So, thank you very much.
Oh, thank you. And everybody in here, Herb, yeah, even I don't have my mother-in-law to send in here to you anymore. But other than that, thanks. It's been some crazy stuff. I mean, Hurricane Sandy, 2:00 in the morning, and then getting a phone call from home. My 10-year-old's firing generators up to get the refrigerator going, incredible snowstorms over the years, and a lot of good people coming in now and stuff. So, that's makes it really nice. And it's kind of hard to leave like this, but my wife asks that I come home. It's a lot for the whole family and stuff like that, everything we've been through and stuff. And wish everybody luck, but always call.
Yeah.
Always call.
Joe?
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. We wish you the best. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Joe.
Moving on to Agenda Item 4, courtesy of the floor, is there anyone here in the public who would like to address the board for any non-agenda items this evening? Come on up to the microphone, sir, and please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name's Stephen Poehl. My address is 1415 Frederick Street, Allentown, PA 18104. A bigger indulgence as I'm unfamiliar with the forms and conventions of the comment period. I don't know if I'm allowed to ask questions or merely comment. My concern is, to my limited knowledge, I might be incorrect, someone may correct me, that seems that commissioners are taking a rather limited interest in the police department. When a citizen files a police complaint, there's no support, there's no information, there's no way of finding out who you're supposed to contact, who's supposed to contact you, when they're supposed to contact you. The chain of command is not explained to you, who has final authority. Another thing is, it seems rather strange that if I have any interactions with an officer on the streets, pulls me over, stops, talks to me, whatever, there's a body cam recording this. Everybody's on their best behavior, allegedly anyway. But if I call in and talk to command staff about my complaint, there's no recordings made, even though your own system, when you call in, demands that if you stay on the phone, you may be recorded. So, I find that a bit surprising that it's body cams for the street but privacy for the suite. So, I find that concerning. You know, I understand that when you guys hire our officers, our police officers, obviously, we'd want to assume that we're having 40 angels in blue. Unfortunately, what we're having is 40 human beings with their faults, foibles, strengths, and weaknesses. You know, I would understand not wanting to interfere with success, but the only information I have is what's public information and my personal knowledge of my interactions with the police, most of whom have been super polite, super professional, and super helpful, most of them. And like I say, I'm a little bit concerned that I'm unfamiliar. Maybe somebody could explain to me what the system is and who's supervising the police department. Somebody should be. I understand the chief is, nice guy, talked to him, great guy, always been square with me, don't get me wrong. But I had one complaint where it was a question of interpretation of law. I felt that I was teaching my granddaughters to drive. I felt under the situation that we got pulled over for DWB, and I didn't appreciate it. Now, I complained. The chief says to me at the end, "I'm sorry, Mr. Poehl, but we are following the letter of the law." Well, I don't have Esquire after my name. I don't have Dr. Jurisprudence, and as far as I know, neither does the chief. So, who legally is looking at these things? That's my concern. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else in the public that would like to address the board this evening? Okay, thank you. Moving on, then, we have no ord-- I'm sorry, getting ahead of myself. Agenda item number five, we have our meeting minutes from our last meeting before us. Are there any comments or questions from the board? I do have a comment on them. Tracy, thank you for preparing the meeting minutes. You've done a tremendous job over the last several months since we've made a change under Randy's leadership to streamline them. There was an addition sent to the board yesterday afternoon when they were posted to our agenda with a paragraph of comments that Commissioner Wilk had made at our last meeting, and it's not in keeping to put an entire comment on our meeting minutes. And I would move that we would accept these meeting minutes and reduce that section to state that Commissioner Wilk publicly thanked interim township manager Randy Cope for his leadership. And as we've done in the past, if there's further information needed, we do have the recorded version of our township meetings on YouTube for the public to see. So, I would make that motion to accept the meeting minutes with that amendment. Is there a second?
I need a clarification. I'm not sure what your motion is.
To strike the paragraph and let the meeting minutes reflect Commissioner Wilk publicly thanked interim township manager Randy Cope for his leadership, which is what the content of your comments were. We're not in the practice of having the entire paragraph in our meeting minutes. So, there's a motion. Is there a second to accept? Okay, we've been motion and seconds. Is there any discussion?
Sure. I recognize that what you're stating is the practice we agreed. I appreciate the fact that Tracy informed the board of this situation. I'm happy to abide if this is what the board wants to do. But I will note that the paragraph you're striking is a paragraph where I recognized Randy Cope for his outstanding job, his leadership, and some extraordinary steps that he took in order to help the board do its job and to enable effective communication between the board and the township manager so our entire government can inform most effectively. So, if the board doesn't think that's appropriate, put in the meeting minutes on account of the rule, then vote that way. If you think that you might want to make an exception to the rule to recognize an outstanding performer for the last seven months in our interim township manager position, then maybe disapprove the motion.
Thank you. Are there any other comments from the board?
I have a comment, please. Of course, being new, I was unfamiliar with Robert's Rules in the Meeting Minutes, and I too had a question earlier in the year about an addition, and Tracy told me what the new protocol was, that it's usually a no vote that's explained. And in order to educate myself, of course, I bought this, Robert's Rules for Dummies, perfect for me. So, I'm going to read a sentence here, and it says, "The minutes need to include what was done in the meeting, not what was said. Include what's done, not what's said, or it could be really a tedious narrative." So, I would tend to support what you have said.
Thank you. And this motion does not in any way diminish the words that you said, Commissioner Wilk. We are very thankful for Randy's leadership over the last several months, so not to be construed for that, but for consistency in our meeting minutes. So, we have a motion and a second on the floor.
I have one comment.
Sure.
I'd like to give Commissioner Hodges some very positive feedback for being so prepared on this issue this evening. Thank you.
I have to. I have a lot to learn, and I'm doing my best for everyone. So, thank you.
Are there any other comments, any from the public? Hearing and seeing none, all in favor of approving the minutes as amended, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed?
I oppose. I appreciate the rule. I think it's more important to put on the record that Randy Cope deserves extremely positive feedback for the job he's been doing.
Thank you for your comment. Motion carries three to one. Moving on, we have no ordinances this evening under resolutions. We have a resolution extending the conditional preliminary final approval granted to a major plan entitled Proposed Independent Living Apartments in Luthercrest. And Dave Manhart, if you would please help us with this resolution.
Yes. So, I will present a brief introduction and then hand it over to the applicant. So, this is the project for Luthercrest located at 800 Housman Road. They're proposing a three-story addition or more additional independent living apartments on a 4.6-acre portion of the site. The original approval by the Board of Commissioners was granted in July of 2021. They are requesting a 180-day extension, which brings them to January 16th, 2023. To date, nine conditions of the approval are unaddressed. A lot of those, some of those conditions are the actual plan recording. The applicant can give some more background on progress. With that, I'll hand it over to the applicant.
Thank you. Good evening. Welcome.
The need for the extension was really based on a lot of different things. We have based pre-sales for our new residents at being 50%, so we can continue the process of developing the land. And we've not quite hit that. So, we really do not feel that we will not, we will be ready for the original date. So, we would like to extend it mostly based off of that. We do have some other issues that for utilities and so forth that are arising with certain items like switchgear and so forth that are not being available. Based off that, we are asking commissioners for the extension.
Very good. Thank you for that explanation, Dave. Are there any comments from the board?
I just have a question, Dave. Is 180 days sufficient?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
I was wondering.
We're actually doing pretty well. We're at 30%, and we have all the dates in mind that we can hit now.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Are there any from the public? Okay, hearing and seeing none. Do I hear a motion to proceed with a resolution extending the conditionary preliminary final approval granted to a major plan entitled Proposed Independent Living Apartments in Luthercrest? Is there a motion to approve?
A motion.
Is there a second?
A second.
Have a motion, a second on the floor. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
And moving on to Resolution B, we have a resolution before us this evening extending the conditional preliminary final approval granted to a major plan entitled Shia Ithna Ashiri Jama of Pennsylvania. Good evening.
Hello. I didn't mean to jump the line.
I can just give a brief intro. So, this is for the mosque at 1500 Ridgeview Drive. They're proposing knocking that one down and building a new one. And it was originally approved in February of 2021. In February of 2022, it was granted a three-month extension. They are back for another extension. So far, they've satisfied seven of the 16 conditions, and with that, I'll hand it over to the applicant.
Thank you, Dave.
Good evening. Kate Kershaw from Fitzpatrick Luntz &amp; Booboo on behalf of the applicant tonight. I think we're very close to finalizing what we need to do here. There was some swirling back and forth about condition number nine specifically and the conditions of approval that the applicant obtains, a letter from the Pennsylvania DEP approving a sewage facilities planning module or an exemption there, too. It was recently settled that we wouldn't need the module and that we are going to seek the exemption. And of course, Mr. Adams, jump in if I'm misstating anything that we've determined here, but that we would seek the exemption letter instead, which, as I'm standing here, may have already been submitted, and if not, will be done expeditiously. And once that domino falls, I think the remainder of the dominos will fall shortly thereafter.
Excellent. Thank you. Greg, is there any comment that you needed to add for the board on that particular condition of number nine?
Unless you have questions, no.
I don't. Does anyone else on the board have any?
Just had the same question as before. Is that enough time?
Yes.
Any other questions?
Yep. I got two questions. Short answers are acceptable. So, it's noted in the information we have that there are CD Department, Greg Adams' comments from 2011-20 that are not completed yet. Can you highlight what those are? And perhaps why they're not complete despite the passage of time?
A lot of times, the comment letters are pretty general, and they encompass a lot of the conditions of the approval. So, most of the time, without getting into details, and Greg may have the details here, but most of the time, the letters are referencing other portions of the letters or things that are needed, going to need to be accomplished. But that's a lot, one of the reasons, or kind of the primary reason, a lot of those comment letters aren't addressed specifically, because they're kind of baked into the approving resolution. With that, if there's details, I can hand it over to Greg.
I guess here's what's behind my question. Is there anything that you commented on that is like a major issue, a significant issue that is troublesome at this much later point in time?
No. In fact, the main sticking point of my letter was that all items related to the water and sewer service be addressed. And this is, the sewage facilities planning module was basically that. So, once that occurs, which should be in a week or so, that'll be taken care of.
All right. So, I have virtually the same question for Herb. It noted that Public Works, Herb Bender's comments from January 28th, '21, any significant issues not resolved that are of great concern?
No. Like Greg said, it's in DEP's hand. We're just waiting for the confirmation from them on the planning module. That's all we're waiting for. Everything else has been addressed.
All right. Thank you.
There's no other questions from the board. Are there any questions from the public? Hearing and seeing none, do I have a motion to proceed with a resolution extending the conditional preliminary final approval granted to a major plan entitled Shia Ithna Ashiri Hamat of Pennsylvania? I'll make that motion. Is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second on the floor. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
You're welcome. Have a good evening.
You as well.
Okay, on to Resolution C. We have a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of South Whitehall Township confirming Jennifer Friedman nominated by the volunteer fire companies as a special fire police for a five-year term. And Commissioner Kizkaravich, good evening.
Good evening, commissioners. This evening, Jennifer Friedman is being confirmed for the position of special fire police at the Woodlawn Fire Department. Jennifer has been through the fire police training and is certified as basic fire police. She has also been sworn in as special fire police by Judge Hammond. So, we're looking for his approval as South Whitehall Township Resolution confirming Jennifer Friedman's nomination by the volunteer fire companies as special fire police for a five-year term.
Thank you. I want to begin by thanking Jennifer for volunteering to serve our community. We welcome you and wish you success as you begin serving in your role as special fire police. Are there any comments or questions from the board?
Yeah, I have one. Congratulations. Thank you for your volunteering and your training. Is Jennifer here? She must be here. I admit, I was ignorant about what the role of fire police is, so I looked it up this afternoon, and it is an extremely important position. So, you know, compound our congratulations to you for performing this role. As I understand it, you secure the boundary around any fire or any other accident situation to provide safety to both the public from not entering the area, which also allows the firemen or, you know, other public safety workers to get the job done. So, very important job. Thank you so much.
I likewise like to thank you very much for what you do for the township, and also like to thank the other individuals that came along with you tonight and thank them for being here with you. Thank you.
Any other comments from the board? Any from the public? Hearing and seeing none, I need a motion to move forward with a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of South Whitehall Township to confirm Jennifer Friedman nominated by the volunteer fire companies as a special fire police for a five-year term. Do I hear said motion?
So, move.
There's a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you and welcome again, Jennifer. Thank you very much.
Thank you, commissioners.
We will move on to motions. We have a motion requesting permission to proceed with Builders Doors and Hardware Incorporated to install new doors at Jacoby Water Station. And Herb, would you present the site in this evening?
President Kelly, if I may ask for the board's consideration here. We do have a water main break happening right now. So, if it's possible for Herb to present motions 9A and motion, I'm sorry, 9E, back to back.
Absolutely.
That way, he can get back to the field.
Absolutely. Very good.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Good evening, commissioners. Public Works has solicited three quotes for the new doors at the Jacoby Water Station. We are requesting permission to move forward with the quote from Builders Door and Hardware, Inc. for $8,421. This was budgeted for $10,000 in the water facility fund.
Thank you, Herb. Are there any questions or comments from the board on this motion? Any from the public? Hearing and seeing none, do I have a motion to proceed with permission to proceed with Builders Doors and Hardware Incorporated to install new doors at the Jacoby Water Station?
So, move.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. We will jump over to motion E, which is a motion to approve recent additional surcharge of $3,800 related to the previously ordered Freightliner Dump Truck.
Okay, thank you. Public Works wanted to let the Board of Commissioners know that a surcharge was applied for the Freightliner Dump Truck. This surcharge is for $3,800. The total with the surcharge brings the truck to $196,326. This was budgeted in liquid fuels for $192,500.
Thank you, Herb. Are there any questions or comments from the board?
I just have a quick question, Herb, and I'll let you go. When we placed the order originally for the truck, did we know there could possibly be a surcharge added? I guess I'm maybe looking at you and also asking legal and saying, could you just automatically throw a surcharge on there?
We did know in the beginning that vendors have let us know that there is a possibility this year when we turned those orders in that there could be surcharges.
Okay.
Yes. Because to bring you all up to date, there's the last page of everything we turned in. There is one from the upfitter that there could potentially be one when it gets to the upfitter to get the body put on the truck also. This truck, because it was ordered in late January, will not be built till October. So, I did reach out to her with Freightliner and ask them that if another surcharge on top of this would come out, is there going to be a cancellation period? And they have told me yes, there will be a cancellation period if another surcharge would be added.
Thank you for looking into that, Herb. We appreciate it. Any other comments from the board? Any from the public? Do I hear a motion to approve the recent additional surcharge of $3,800 related to the previously ordered Freightliner Dump Truck?
So, move.
Second? A motion and a second on the floor. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries four to zero. Sorry. Thank you, Herb. And please hope everyone's safe, all the employees that are out there taking care of that water main break. Thank you. Have a good evening. We will jump a little bit backwards, then, to motion B. So, we have a motion requesting permission to proceed with the advertising bid for the Wears Dam project, and I will ask our interim township manager Randy Cope to present this item.
Thank you. Certainly an exciting time for this project. I know it's been under old business for quite some time, but good news is, is the bid package is just about complete. Tonight is more of a formality here to get the board's permission to proceed with advertising this bid. And if you look in the memo in your packet here, you'll see I did include a projected bid schedule for the board's advisement here. So, with tonight's permission, after this, we'll be-- we'll be going advertising in the local newspaper on May 13th and May 17th as required. We'll do a mandatory pre-bid meeting with the interested parties on May 24th. Questions will need to be submitted to PennBid by May 31st. We will do our bid opening on June 16th and then be back to the BOC with a recommendation to award a contract on June 15th. So that's the, the schedule here in front of us for the next, next month or so. The project is budgeted under the capital fund in this year's budget for $850,000. The board did approve a contract to Michael Baker earlier this year to help oversee the project, the construction administration permit closeout and helping with these bid specs. So we have a current balance in this budget of $772,260.
Thank you, Randy. I appreciate you mapping out a timeline for us. It's very exciting to see this project come to fruition as you had mentioned. And it's exciting to think we'll award the contract in June and we look forward to the dam rehabilitation project begin. Do you have an expected date of when we can hope to see some work start finally?
It will certainly depend on a number of elements. I do have Ralph Abahart here from Michael Baker if he wants to jump in, but it's certainly going to depend on how the prices come in. Obviously, you know, if, depending on what those prices are, that could change direction here, but hopefully not. Hopefully they come in within budget and we're able to get this accomplished here this summer. Obviously, we'll need to work with the contractor too to develop some sort of construction timeframe and agreed upon conclusion date for this. But the idea would hopefully be to start as soon as possible after the, the contract is awarded on June 15th. Typically till, you know, mobilization takes place and those sort of things happen, we could be into July by that point. But certainly we will get off and running as fast as physically possible.
Excellent, thank you, Randy. Are there any other comments or questions from the board? Mr. Hodges?
I have a question, President Kelly, thank you. Does anybody know how long this rehab will take?
So the project's scheduled for five months. However, they will not be working in the waterway for five months. They'll get in and get out as fast as they physically can. Obviously with the threat of weather conditions and things like that, it's obviously something we're very aware of. So until, you know, the turf areas that could be disturbed by their staging area, those sort of things do take time. We could run into a growing season issue depending on when the project gets finished. But the majority of the work in the stream bank, Ralph, what do you think, four to six weeks probably? Actually physically working in the stream roughly? So. And then there's some restoration work outside and obviously with the turf areas and the trail and things like that.
Any other questions from the board? Anything from the public? Hearing and seeing none, I need a motion, hear a motion to request permission to proceed with the advertising bid for Wears Dam. I'll make that motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
A motion and a second on the floor. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries four to zero. Thank you, Randy. Moving on to motion C, we have a motion before us to approve budgetary transfers. And we're going to call our Director of Finance, Scott Barrett, to present on this item.
Good evening, Commissioners. Tonight we have two budgetary transfers that are in front of you. The first is regarding an HR audit and an HR policy type review. So we will be bringing in an outside professional to basically establish a checklist of what we need and how best do we go forward with that process. The second budgetary transfer has to do with our consultant in the executive department where our professional services line item needs a little more money in that budgetary account. So the first action requested is a transfer for $7,500 from wages and human resources to professional services. The second is a transfer from wages in the executive department to professional services in the executive department. So both of these budgetary accounts have, have money in them for the position of township manager and for an HR position. But as, as you now know, it's, it's May and we haven't spent the money for those positions. So I'm not in any sort of, there's no concern from my end that we're going to go over in the salaries and wages account items for the rest of the year in, in those areas. But, you know, if, if the board approves, we do need this money for what we're doing next. So thank you.
Very good, thank you, Scott. Are there any questions from the board on this motion?
I have a comment on the, the first transfer, which has to do with the, the HR assessment. Again, I'd like to give Randy Cope positive feedback. He's been working to identify our HR needs. So thank you for that and also engaging integrity personnel for this purpose. What's behind this, I agree with a strategy, which is to assess the current state of the HR policies and procedures before the new township manager is on board and then have this information available for his use so he can decide what he wants to do with it. And we anticipate part of that will be hiring a new HR manager. So I think it's very well thought out, logical sequence and well done.
Any other questions from the board? Any from the public? Do I hear a motion to approve budgetary transfers as presented? Second, motion and a second on the floor. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries four to zero. Thank you. Moving on to motion D, we have a motion requesting permission to add the Woodlawn Fire, I'm sorry, Woodlawn Deputy Chief's vehicle to the township insurance policy. And we'll call Fire Commissioner Chris Kiskaravich to present this motion.
Good evening, and Commissioners. Currently, Woodlawn Fire Department has purchased a vehicle for their deputy chief's position. This is a company-owned vehicle, so it's not in our township fleet. Woodlawn is requesting the insurance, fuel costs and maintenance costs will, will be added under the fire fund in the, in the vehicle maintenance insurance and fuel line budget items. Currently with, with fuel costs, looking at the fuel cost fit. Currently, the deputy chief is using a Suburban that is currently in, in the, in the roles of of the township owned, owned vehicles. And that vehicle will be moving into like a reserve status for classes and stuff. So I, what I would see is fuel costs of what the deputy chief was doing already should fall right in line. And the only thing we'd see in additional fuel costs is probably additional fuel when, when that Suburban goes out and does training classes and they use that for additional response. So I would see that the fuel costs would probably stay right in line with, with what the deputy chief was using already. As, as far as the insurance goes, all vehicles, whether they're township-owned or, or company-owned have, are currently insured through the township. Township has insured all of those. And with it being a brand-new vehicle, I would suspect very minimal costs on, on repairs on this vehicle. This, this request does stay in line with what we've done for Greenow Walls and Citronia with their company-owned vehicles also.
Very good, thank you.
And Commissioners, I would like to add that this is part of the fire services agreement. It is a provision in that agreement that was signed back in 2019.
Thank you for that added information. We appreciate both of you presenting for the board. Are there any questions on this motion? Any from the public? Hearing and seeing none, do I have a motion to request permission to add the Woodlawn Deputy Chief's vehicle to the township insurance policy? I'll make that motion, is there a second? Motion and a second on the floor. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
President Kelly?
Yes.
I do have a quick question for you. Because I don't, I don't know. It's a general question, has absolutely nothing to do with this vehicle or, or, you know, deputy or anything. But the township does own a fleet that employees use. You know, we own fire, police. Public Works has a lot of equipment as well. Do we have any kind of standard for driving township vehicles, like safety standards or training on, on certain apparatus or vehicles? And if we do, does it help our insurance? Like if we have these provisions and, you know, every so often they have to go through training or take a test or so forth? And would we get a break on our insurance in, in the township?
I don't know if we get a break on insurance by any specific certifications. I would have to investigate that and, and check in with our, our carrier as to whether certifications, because there's different certifications a lot of the departments go through. Each of our stations has a training program. They have an in-house training program for qualifying drivers on vehicles. When they start driving the fire apparatus, they'll start them off on smaller vehicles, like the pickup-sized truck type style before they get in the engines and, and then things as large as the rescue truck or the ladder truck or, or take a lot more training. Currently, this year I am working on a pumper driver operator program, which is a certification program to qualify individuals through a national pro bird qualifications as operators of, of the pumper-style fire apparatus. So we're, we're engaged in that. I do know several other companies do formal EVOC training. And I do know that they also have, their in-house training programs mirror that also. If that, does that answer?
Kind of, yeah. I'm just wondering about other departments as well, like Public Works.
So, so for Public Works, obviously there are certain pieces of equipment that our staff needs to carry a CDL for. There's different classes for CDLs. It does not necessarily give us a break on our insurance, but they are trained efficiently in, on those pieces of equipment in order to actually get trained in that. You have to get checked off on a list. So down in Public Works, you'll, you'll see on a bulletin board, Herb will have a, a checkoff sheet. And they need to have so many seat hours before they're officially checked off. And then they're actually monitored and tested by our Public Works management team before they're actually off and running with that piece of equipment.
Yes, and I'll, I'll point out that in Pennsylvania, they do have a waiver on emergency vehicles for CDLs. So the larger vehicles, they're not, they're required to be trained on them, but they're not required to carry the commercial driver's license. That could be handled through, through in-house and, and with a waivers from the fire chiefs.
That's very interesting information. Thank you. Thank you for bringing that question up, Commissioner Hodges.
Thank you.
Moving on to motion F, we have a motion requesting permission to award professional services to Michael Baker International for finalization of the comprehensive plan. And we will turn this over to our interim township manager, Randy Cope, to present to the board.
I'm actually going to kick this one over to Dave Manhart, our community development director.
Okay. Sounds good.
Okay, so the community development department is requesting permission and it's a professional service. So there's kind of a gray area of what the threshold is and all that. But we thought it was a better idea to bring it to the board for permission. It's a, the scope of work includes finalizing the comp plan. So we're getting near the end and we have all of this information. And we really are looking for the assistance of putting it all together into a nice concise plan. The proposal is not to exceed 40,000. There are some add-ons in the proposal, including graphic design. And, you know, we won't really know until we get to that point. So we're asking that the amount not to exceed 50,000. We have 100,000 in the budget, in the line item. So this will use half of it. And the intent is to save the other half for the next part of the implementable pieces of the comp plan, whether it's official map updates or zoning ordinances or things like that. So it saves us a good chunk of change to handle that piece as well. The other piece I'd like to highlight is having the consultant help is going to accelerate the timeline. They're going to be able to help us put things together in a more timely manner, which is, I think, the other big piece is it's going to take some of the weight off of Greg and I of putting this together. So with that, if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Thank you, Dave. Other questions from the board?
I, I just have, what is the timeline? I know we talked about, I think originally, didn't we?
Yeah, it, it kind of depends is, is really the answer. There's a 45-day comment period, so that's required. So whenever we hit that, we get the draft to a point where we can open that comment period, it's 45 days from that. Kind of the beauty of the way we have it structured is as we're going through goals and objectives at the workshops, we have an opportunity to work on previous goals and objectives, other components of the plan. So the draft can be worked on concurrently while we're going through the goals and objectives process so that hopefully, once we get through that, those workshops, we have a draft 80% there to save us some time once we, to get that 45-day. This has taken a long time. So I think, you know, realistically, by the end of the year, having an approved plan is achievable. And again, it, once we get into like the, the draft and running iterations and if we want to go back and make some changes based on the models that we plug things into, that'll just kind of push the can down the road.
I understood. Yeah, I, I have one other question. I did read this and I'm just going to, it's on page six. Additional planning commissions workshops are $1,000 per workshop inclusive of preparation of all workshop material facilitations and a workshop summary. I don't have a problem with that, except we had a meeting here one night that was like less than five or 10 minutes due to some technology issues. It had nothing to do with anything else. I would have a hard time approving an invoice for $1,000 if somebody had to come out for a five-minute meeting on technology issues, whereas it may be a two- or three-hour meeting.
I would say the bulk of that, that fee is involved in preparation. So in that case, the preparation would get tied to the, the next meeting where we hold the meeting. So, you know, and they, we get charged billed hourly. So if the meeting's two hours, we'll get a two-hour bill. If it's five minutes, we may not even get a invoice.
May not is the, the key there.
But, you know, it's something that we.
Vendors have a tendency to bill municipalities and school districts.
We're very.
Because they can.
Yes.
Because they know they have money. It's, it's, it's a, it's a guy given fact. I've done it for 25 years where I invoice. And unfortunately, when they know your line item, and it's not just unique with you, Dave, when they know how much money you've got, it's amazing how they come in right under that number.
It, it is amazing.
It's just like, wow.
What I will say, what I will say is the previous work we've done with Michael Baker has, they've been great to work with and they have not, as far as we've seen, we haven't seen them abusing.
I just wanted to bring it up as I saw it when I was reading.
Thank you.
I have two comments. The first is a follow-up to Commissioner Kennedy's first question. I'm sorry, David, I don't think you answered the question. He asked for a schedule and you explained activity without really giving an answer about any, any, any dates.
I don't think I can give an answer.
Okay. I real, I realize that's pretty much what you said. So I would like to, I think I've mentioned this at a previous meeting. I would like to ask you to the best of your ability to produce some type of bar chart schedule. I realize the process you explained is not exactly linear, but nevertheless, some bar chart schedule, let's say it's the end of the year, okay? That's seven months. Some interim milestones in the next seven months. And I'll add this thought. I know you're pressed for time. Perhaps this falls within Michael Baker's skill set. And if they come on board, then this is something they, they can, they can provide.
Yeah, we can work with them. And it's almost a critical path, like diagram, because, you know, once we get to these milestones, then the next piece falls and then we can work on the next piece. But, you know, because it's an iterative process and we want comment and feedback and, you know, proposal and feedback, depending on how long that takes, you know, we don't want to really push that forward and ignore comments. But, you know, that's also the balancing act is trying to get it done. But we can work, certainly work on a.
I, I, this thought, this thought just sprang to my mind. This thought just sprang to my mind. I don't want to get into like scheduling methods. Your conversation sort of describes as this needs to happen, and then this, and then this, and it will get done someday. The other way to do it is, that's the deadline, and it's going to get done by then, and therefore, all the intermediary steps need to be done by the state in order to hit that.
Yep.
Just a suggestion.
Yeah, and that's something we can talk about at the next workshop. We'll bring up scheduling and kind of get a night feedback planning commission and BOC and kind of see where timeline, you know, if we have a drop-dead date and we want to get it done by then, then, you know, we'll certainly, and if we have Michael Baker on board, we can certainly more realistically hit that target.
Right. My second comment's completely positive. Your proposal to hire Michael Baker for half the money and to save the other half of the money for the implementation phase is completely consistent with what we budgeted and the reasoning for the budget, so I support it completely.
Thank you.
Commissioner Hodges, sir?
Thanks, President Kelly. I just had a quick question. Is it common for a township to pay a consultant to help finish out something like a comp plan? Is it, other townships do it? We've done it in the past. Is it a common practice?
Frankly, it's more common to have a consultant handle it soup to nuts. So we're kind of, and it was partly because George and I were on staff, and George, Greg, and myself were on staff, and we all had the experience, so we felt like we could bring this through. So there's been some challenges between 2019 and today. So I think using that, one of the things that we've done with consultants is trying to use them to their expertise. So we brought in economic modelers, transportation modelers, and, you know, fitting the consultant to the task. One of the things, you know, the other option, if we, like most municipalities, will handle one, hire one consultant to do the whole thing. So in this case, we're using, you know, this specialized consultant for a specialized task. So I think that's kind of a wiser use of the funds that are available.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Dave, I had a question. On page three, one of the tasks, one deliverables is monthly invoices and milestone reports. So there was discussion earlier tonight about milestone reports, so will that, is that something that will be shared with the Board of Commissioners so that we're aware of what the timeline is?
So I, thank you for bringing that up. I think when we get the milestone report, it's going to talk to exactly what Mike's talking about, and we can share that with the, probably at the workshops is the appropriate place to share that, and we can build that into the presentation as we go through as kind of an update on where we are in the milestone-wise.
And also on page three, there's a reference to a comp plan committee. Is that-
So there were references to a comp plan committee. That one must have slipped through. We took that out and changed it to the planning commission workshops, because we're not doing committee, a separate committee. We're doing the planning commission and BOC workshop. So that's really where that piece is.
Okay, and last question. We're approving forty thousand dollars for the basic contract tonight. I understand there's particular add-ons that we could include not to exceed fifty thousand, so if there is something between the forty and fifty, will that come back before the board?
So I was asking for fifty tonight, so I don't have to come back to the board, but it's at the pleasure of the board. If we want to, you know, and I'm not, I, we will be talking about it in these workshops as far as, you know, whether the graphic designer is something that we should pursue. Having Michael Baker's staff on hand will help with that conversation and can kind of talk about capabilities that they have and examples of plans that, once we get to the drafting piece of it. So that fifty thousand will just prevent, we won't have to come back to the full board, but we will certainly discuss it at the planning commission workshops.
Okay. Any other questions or comments, any from the public? Okay, hearing and seeing none. We have a motion requesting to proceed with requesting permission to award professional services to Michael Baker International for finalization of the comprehensive plan. I'll second that. We have a motion to second on the floor. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries four to zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to agenda item ten, it's our correspondence and information items. We'll begin with current vacancies on boards and commissions, and I'll ask our interim township manager to present on this item.
Sure. We have one alternate vacancy on our civil service commission, one vacancy on our green advisory council, two vacancies on our landscape shade tree commission, one vacancy on our parks and recreation board, and three vacancies on our environmental advisory council. We do have a few upcoming meetings next week. Monday, May ninth, we'll have our next Parks and Recreation Board meeting at 7:00 PM. Tuesday, May tenth, the comprehensive plan workshop will occur here at 7:00 PM. Wednesday, May eleventh, we'll have our next civil service commission meeting at 1:00 PM. Thursday, May twelfth will be our crime watch meeting at 6:00 PM, and Monday, May sixteenth will be our next green advisory council meeting at 6:00 PM.
Thank you. Just as a comment on the calendar, I did have a comment from a resident recently. They had noticed, actually, one of them had spoken to me about an increase in litter along the Jordan Creek Greenway. They walked that area often and had noticed an increase in it, and then also at our Parks and Rec Plan Meeting last week, we had a resident share that same concern with Southwest Chase Park. And I didn't know if we needed to have a discussion about that, if there was a way that maybe we could partner with some community groups to do community cleanups. I know we just did one for Earth Day, but that's once a year.
What was the, I'm sorry, was the Greenway litter recent?
Yes.
Okay. And-
And Southwest Chase Park.
Yep.
I don't know if we need more trash cans or maybe no littering signs, but the suggestion that was made to me was, hey, wouldn't it be great to bring in a group of volunteers periodically to kind of help with that, so. Commissioner Hodges, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I spoke with a resident as well, and they had concerns about the trash overflowing, and sometimes there was dog waste in the trash can, so they were wondering if there could be more frequent checks on the trash can, and the same thing, I heard about the trails being littered, and I actually had another comment. I was going to bring it up under direction and discussion, but I had a conversation with another resident who called me and was concerned with Jordan Road. And actually, I spoke with Tom Harper on this. He helped me out. But between Hazadell and Huckleberry, there's a lot of dumping on Jordan Road. I guess it had been done for a while. And he, this gentleman, he walks every single day, and he picks up all the trash on his walk, but there's some things like tires and things that he can't pick up, so he was asking me for help. I did call Tom Harper, but I don't know, Chief, maybe this is a question for you, is, he was asking me, is it possible to put a no dumping sign on that area? And he said, if you go and you look at it, it's clean, but it's because he takes his walks and he cleans up the little stuff. But he said that he feels that it's the same group dumping, and if someone sees the dumping, they dump as well, and, you know, there's-
I mean, I'm sure Public Works can post that for no dumping, but we can, what we'll do is we'll have a direct patrol with our officers to keep an eye on that area to make sure that they know that there's ongoing dumping or habitual dumping there to keep an eye out for things like that.
Thank you.
Commissioner Kelly, I have two reports. First is a finance committee report from our meeting on April twenty-seventh. It's a little longer than normal because we covered a lot of ground, but I'll go through these items quick. There's ten items. They're all information, except the last one requires some direction from the board. So here goes. Item one, the 2021 audit. The Southwest Old Township Auditor has all the information required to complete the 2021 audit. The auditor will complete the 2021 audit reports by the end of May, present the audit report to the finance committee on June nine, and do the BOC on June fifteen. Second item, fund balance policy. Finance Committee agreed final revisions to the policy, which will be presented in just a little bit later in this meeting. Item three, financial statements. Our finance director, Scott Perret, reported that certain accounts are projecting to be over budget. That's just a few accounts. Therefore, he will speak with staff about the need to manage these budget accounts more closely. Item four, we had a discussion about the 2023 budget instructions and timeline. This is all in accordance with the board directive to revise the whole budget process to make certain improvements. So here's a handful of highlights. All budgets will be balanced and provide for sufficient revenues to cover expenditures. Staff budgets will be zero-based, where staff will justify every expenditure. And now regarding the timeline, the finance director will initiate the budget process in June, which is earlier than we've done previously. The BOC, for the first time, will proactively provide goals and direction, and that will occur in July. And then the BOC will provide feedback to the staff on their initial proposed budgets also in July. So much more proactive than in the past, and this new process will make the final budget workshops in October and November much more effective, less iterative. Fifth item, pension fund. Commissioner Kennedy serves on both the finance and pension committee. The pension committee will meet to review the information provided by a citizen at the last BOC meeting. Item six, campus renovation. Scott Perret reported, there's one remaining piece of work that needs to be done, which is speeding. Once that work is complete, that will allow Southwest Old Township to receive the one million dollar funds that has been retained by the bank for the overall project. Item seven, purchasing policy. We only had a fleeting discussion on the subject at our next meeting. We will review a proposed draft purchasing policy. And we need to address one thing. Need to review the policy, but at the same time, there's potential updates to the underlying payment systems, so you have to look at the two in tandem in order to figure out how to make progress. Item eight, refuse bills. Finance Committee discussed the need to stop sending zero-balance bills. Item nine, credit card payment system. The committee discussed the goal, which is to provide the best citizen credit card payment system that will be used to pay utility bills and parks fees. The current system has limitations, which cause citizen underutilization and staff efficiency to be low. And there's a secondary issue regarding whether the township or citizen should pay the transaction fee. So Finance Director Scott Perret is investigating an alternate credit card payment system. An updated report will be provided after his investigations complete. And overall, the munis upgrade must be completed before any new credit card payment system could be used. And here's the last item, which requires some BOC direction. So we discuss the potential for a Southwest Old Township 501(c)(3). Actually, Mike Cookett came in and gave a lot of information on this subject since he's familiar from the parks perspective. We talked about the need to establish a 501(c)(3) so that people can donate money and get a tax deduction, and so that the township can apply for grants and use the donated money as matching funds. Any 501(c)(3) would require a separate board president and financial statements. And here's where we get into the question or the action. We need Solicitor Zader and Solicitor Alderfer sitting in here tonight. We need legal advice regarding whether Southwest Old Township can establish either of these two things. Either one umbrella 501(c)(3), where the donated money is used for multiple purposes, or we would have multiple 501(c)(3)'s, and each one of those would have an individual specific purpose. So the question for the board, given all of that, is what priority should be placed on establishing a 501(c)(3), which means should work be done on it at this time or not? And if you want to couple it with the legal question, should Solicitor Zader be requested to provide legal advice on how to set up 501(c)(3)'s?
Thank you for that report. Are there any comments by the board?
I sit on that committee also with Mike. Good, excellent job. You covered every topic. Basically, the idea of the 501(c)(3) is to have, what we'd like to do is have one 501(c)(3) for the township. When Mike says umbrella, let the person who is contributing funds to the township designate it for parks, for Parks and Recs, for the Heroes to Holidays, which is through the police department. That would become specific to whoever donates the money. So that's what we're looking at by umbrella, okay? Just having one 501(c)(3) and then have the person, or if the grant is being applied for Parks and Recs, we would know that it was for that. So that's the clarification. I'm looking at our Solicitor Mike. So that's what Jennifer, so that's what it'll be. The umbrella is one 501(c)(3). We don't need two boards. We don't need two of everything. Well, we can have one and let the umbrella, let the individual decide where that funding is going to go for them, okay? So that's just a clarification on that. So, but other than that, I'm all for it. I mean, I, you know, when I was a school board member, I contributed to the Parkland Foundation, which is their 501(c)(3). I'm no longer on the school board, so obviously, I want to continue with the police department and the Heroes for the Holidays and things like that. So it's, yeah, it is going to require a little bit extra work. I don't think we should take away some of the things that Trish is doing or Scott's doing, but as we progress, you know, maybe we can find out what specifically we need to do, you know, I wouldn't make it a full project, but, you know, if we don't start, we'll never finish. So Mike and myself and Scott and Trish and Randy have been talking about it for the last two or three meetings, so we're making a little progress. The question is, does the board want to proceed? Having them take time to do it or not, and I certainly, it's not a motion, but I certainly think we should.
Yeah, I would agree. Thank you for that presentation on both Commissioner Wilk and Kennedy. Thank you for your work on the finance subcommittee. I am in agreement with moving forward with a 501(c)(3) for the reasons that were stated here tonight. I think it will help provide another avenue for citizens or businesses who would like to contribute to some of our programs or parks, police. I think it's a great idea, and I would certainly be in favor of moving forward with asking Solicitor's office to begin helping us on that.
Okay, I understand the concept and what we're asked to do, so if that's what the board wishes, then we can do that.
Commissioner Hodges?
No, I completely agree. Thank you for all that work. That was well done, well presented. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
I have one more short report. Land Preservation Committee report. We had a brief preliminary meeting on April twenty-seventh. Commissioner Osborne was out of town and couldn't attend, so it was the three of us, Randy Cope, Dave Manhart, and myself. We'll have a full committee meeting next Monday, May ninth, after Commissioner Osborne returns. We'll provide a more full committee report out at the next BOC meeting on May eighteenth. Be reassured that as part of our discussions, we're considering the April thirteenth land preservation workshop information, and that'll be embodied in our report back to this board. Thanks.
Thank you. Any comments on that report for the land preservation subcommittee? Okay, moving on then to old business. We have where's dam again, but I believe Randy probably covered everything on-
Nothing further to report tonight.
We'll move on to old business, agenda item B, comprehensive plan update. Dave Manhart.
So as Randy mentioned, we have the next workshop on May Tuesday, next Tuesday. We will be, so we've been working on revising the resource protection goals and strategies. We have kind of reformatted it, so it's a lot clearer, a lot more concise. So we'll present those and review those, and then jump into community utilities. Also want to point out that we added a comment form on the website to solicit comments for the goals and objectives, the overall goals and objectives that we covered at the workshop. After this next workshop, once we kind of vet out the resource protection, we can post those and start getting comments on more of the goals and objectives as we- those and start getting comments on more of the goals and objectives as we present them.
Thank you, Dave. I just had one question. I know that we're trying to engage the public to help participate and provide their comments as we build this comp plan. I know one of the areas that we focus on often is social media, and some of our elderly in the township don't utilize social media. Is that, is there a way that we can potentially put some information on Nextdoor? I know that that's a good community forum.
We can.
We've talked about utility bills and whatnot, and I know as this process is moving, I'd like to see us really try to engage people.
And that's another reason to, I'm happy that we're bringing Michael Baker in because that'll help get more effort in the engagement, you know, whether it's the email lists or using Nextdoor or Parks and Rec, social media. You know, so that's kind of, I see with the engagement of Michael Baker, we can start ramping that up a lot more.
Excellent, thank you. Any other comments from the board? Any from the public? Okay, moving on, Old Business Agenda Item C, we have Jordan Creek Greenway Phase One River Road Shared Pathway, and I will ask Randy Cope to present.
Sure. As we know, we did receive a million dollar grant through TASSA to support the construction from Wheremel Road down to Lap Road. We do have a pinch point along River Road right at the guide rail. So we held a meeting out there with some representatives from LTAP, a few commissioners, as well as our engineering team from Michael Baker, who's designing this project for us. And we're currently in the design option phase, I'll call it. We're looking at all of our options out there to make sure the trail is safely designed, both for pedestrian use as well as long-term success of this trail. So that's where we currently stand with the project. We should be receiving some design information here in regards to that pinch point, hopefully within the next few weeks. So I hope to have more information and report out at the May 18th meeting.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from the board? I do have one comment. I did, one of the options we talked about when we met down at River Road was to possibly put a bridge tandem to the road so we would keep pedestrians off of the shared roadway. I did stop by Haynes Mill Road Park, I think Cedar Park West, Lehigh County's property. And they had an aluminum bridge with wooden planks, or it looked like treks almost, which might have been a nice, maybe mid-range cost bridge. I don't know if that's something that we can look at and maybe bring back some options to the board as we look at the best way to keep our pedestrians safe.
Yep, I do have that information, so I can certainly look into that and share that information with our engineering team to see if that would be successful along River Road.
Commissioner Hodges?
Yeah, I just have a quick question. Cover Bridge Park is how many acres? Is it one?
Eight acres?
Roughly.
We've seen a couple of different numbers. We've seen 165, we've seen 112, we've seen 125. It's a relatively big park, so I can certainly fine tune that information. I know Dave can help us out from a mapping standpoint to get the exact acreage of all the parcels, but.
Okay, I look forward to seeing those different options, and I do hope that whatever the exact acreage is, whether it's 160, 130, 170, I hope we can find a safe way to keep people off that shared road. Thank you.
Any public comment on this item? Okay, moving on to direction and discussion, we have this item A, is our fund balance policy, and we'll ask our Director of Finance, Scott Barrett, to please present.
Good evening, Commissioners. I was in a session this morning at the Government Finance Officers Association that was talking about fund balance policies. I was laughing because we're here tonight to review this. The folks who were presenting did a skit on the difference between a fund balance and a fund balance, and they were very clear with that difference. So tonight, I'm not going to read the full policy only because I presented to the board back in November or December, but I will walk through the highlights, and then I'm going to leave it to the pleasure of the board as to if the board wants to discuss and have further questions that would lead to further work, we're free to do that. If the board would like to pass by motion, approve this policy, you are also free to do that as well. This is one of eight policies that I'm bringing to the board as part of our continued efforts to improve our fiscal responsibility. The fund balance policy is the most paramount to having a sound financial backing. So this one is the most important out of all of the policies that we're working on. This one is the most important. What you need to know in terms of education is that there are five types of fund balance. The one that we're talking about tonight and the one that we're setting the threshold for is what's called the unrestricted or unassigned fund balance. The GFWA recommends two months of revenues or expenditures in the general fund, and that's about 17%. However, what we're recommending is a general fund, unassigned fund balance of between 20 and 30% of general fund revenues. So as of, to bring this into a numbers perspective, as of the 2020 audit, we had $6.8 million in unassigned fund balance, which is at 38%. So it's not as if we're trying to get there for this specific one. This is just setting in stone from now until eternity that South Whitehall Township has a fund balance policy, and we're going to act in accordance with that from now into the future. There were some considerations that we took that are very specific to our township itself. One of them just talks about the high concentration that we have in our budget to admissions tax revenues. And so another factor includes, you know, this is the kind of thing, we need to have a good fund balance on hand in case there are major, major capital improvements that need to be made on an emergency purpose. Also, debt profile is a consideration here as well because the township, we need to be able to pay our debt payments. The fund balance works all of this into here. So the suggestion that we all looked at as the Finance Committee, as we helped each other build this policy, Mike and Dave were very helpful, and Diane, you were on the committee last year, and we looked at this as well. So, but yeah, the main piece is the 20 to 30% threshold on the general fund. Where we had a little bit more discussion was not so much on the general fund. It really had to do with the enterprise funds, which are our water or sewer and our refuse funds. And guidance with other townships of our size and other municipalities, there's not a one-size-fits-all for the enterprise funds. With those municipalities, it kind of depends on what the specific considerations that each one has. So I had meetings with Herb Bender, I had meetings with Randy, meetings with staff, finance staff who know the water fund and the sewer fund and their budgets. And so we have recommended amounts for the water fund to have, the terminology you're going to see there is net position, and that's just an accounting thing. So we are recommending $5 million for a net position for the water fund. We are also recommending for the sewer fund, based on these specific factors, that we don't know what the future holds in terms of the LCA project with Klein's Island. Based on that, we're recommending $10 million to work towards that. With the refuse fund, we decided to use a metric of two months of operating expenses as of the most recent budget. That would put us around $477,000. To give you a picture of where we're at, because obviously a big question says, okay, $10 million, that's a lot of money. How are we going to get there? The vehicle for establishing and maintaining these levels of fund balance or net position occurs during the annual budget process. So the board gets to weigh in on how that's going to happen. The Director of Finance and the Township Manager through the budget process will build a plan over the course of five years to arrive at certain levels, or if we dip below in the general fund, we can beef that up over the next five years. So the water fund currently has $2.6 million in fund balance. So that would give us about room to shoot for $475,000 in each budget year from now for the next five years. The sewer fund, we have $4.9 million. The board set aside $2 million specifically for this, for the Klein's Island expected project in the 2022 budget. So that would give us about $1 million to shoot for per year. The refuse fund, we have $243,000 in reserve there, and we would need about $46,000 a year for those. So that's kind of all of the overview. I know that was a lot of info, but that's what I have tonight, and it's up to the board to, if there's discussion to be had, or if we want to move forward with this, we can do that. But at this time, I'll let you talk.
Thank you, Scott, for presenting this, for pulling it together. It's absolutely an important document for the township moving forward. We appreciate that. I just had a couple of comments for the enterprise funds that you just mentioned, what our current fund balance is based on what we're going to need to set aside each budget year for the next several years without having the benefit of the 2023 budget in front of us and beyond. From your perspective, knowing the numbers, are these numbers in line with something that we can work into our budget without setting it a little bit lopsided? A million dollars per year for the sewer fund is a big number.
Yeah, it is a big number. The way I look at it is, it's a very complicated math problem, and there may be a balancing act between which projects, if there are capital in nature, get prioritized or put off a year or whatever it may be. And I would rather go that route than the rate increase route. But if there is a balance of both that need to occur to prioritize our financial future is still a good thing, in my opinion.
I would agree. Thank you. The only other comment I had, there were a couple of places in this document where, for example, at the bottom of page five, it talks about fluctuations that the Township Manager and Director of Finance will develop a restoration plan in accordance with the policy. I wanted to have a discussion with the board if we should add to that, that will be prepared and then subsequently presented to the board for approval. There's a few places in here where I see Township Manager will prepare a plan to restore unassigned fund balance, but there's not that extra step of present to the board. I know it's implied, but I think it would be a good idea to actually include that language. It's several times on page four.
May I ask if we can explicitly have a, the plan be a separate piece than the budget? That might be helpful here.
You're asking us to only concentrate on page five at this time?
Now, let me.
So in terms of bringing that plan to the board, I would suggest to write a sentence that would say something to the degree of this plan, because currently, as it is implied in the current budget process, just have a sense that explicitly states that that plan is a separate document from the actual budget.
Sure, that makes sense.
I'd like to expand upon Commissioner Kelly's point. So as you know, I've made Commissioner Kelly's point repeatedly during the last year, let's say, as this fund balance policy was being developed. And so far, the way it's been handled is, there's one sentence, and honestly, to my chagrin, it's buried in the middle of the document somewhere as opposed to being in the first paragraph, that says the BOC has the authority and accountability over this entire fund balance policy. Scott, you'd have to help us find that.
On page four.
Yeah.
First sentence under policy.
So we have all of this information. We have a lot of textbook definitions of all the different components of the budget and so on and so forth. And not until we get to page four do we have this statement that the BOC has the accountability
Do we want that on page one?
I would like that maybe closer to page one, paragraph one. And then what was intended, to go to Commissioner Kelly's point, what was intended was that that's sort of the overarching umbrella statement that that applies to this full document. In our last meeting, I made a very similar statement to Commissioner Kelly. I said, I think you need to add that as the last sentence on page five. You know, so specifically for these enterprise funds, where it says Township Manager and Finance Director will do the restoration policy, well, that has to be approved by the BOC. So I don't know, I'm not going to prescribe how to do it, but I agree with Commissioner Kelly's point in it, you know, it needs to be solidified in this document.
Thank you. And to that point on page three, when it talks about the fund being between 20 and 30%, it says if it drops below that, the Township Manager will develop a plan implemented through the budget process to bring the balance to the target level. Again, at no point does it say that that plan that's going to be developed is going to be presented to the board for approval. I think even though that is implied with the statement that Commissioner Wolf just spoke about, I do think it should specifically be written there as a part of that policy. My second question there is that particular policy section allows a period of five years to bring the balance to the target level? I wonder if we should have discussion about bringing that a little bit sooner. I was thinking maybe two years. I mean, five years is an awfully long time, and I think that there should probably be an urgency to the goal to restore it, and if we don't meet that goal, we certainly can reassess, but five years seems like a long time to have a ship not sailing the correct way. Any other?
I think you're confused.
No.
Okay.
No, not, no. If you want it to be two years, yeah, yeah. Five years gives us a little more latitude.
No, I don't think it's five, I don't think it's five years, it's two years to get to these numbers. It's two years to get if we fall below it.
Right. Page three of the policy.
Now I'm confused.
On page three, under GFWA Best Practice, second paragraph, it says if the unassigned fund balance would be between 20 and 30, if it falls below, the Township Manager will develop a plan implemented through the budget process to bring the balance to the target level over a period of no more than five years. I'm asking if we should consider a two-year period?
I see.
Does that make sense to the board?
I think for, specifically for the general fund, as opposed, so just talking about the general fund at this moment and not the enterprise funds, knowing the dynamics, the flexibility of the general fund, I think it has a greater ability to restore a shortfall than perhaps the enterprise funds. So I would agree, for the general fund, it should be a two-year goal versus five years.
Right. Let's do it.
Sounds good.
Yeah. Because we're there, we're just falling below it.
Right.
Yeah, so we're just going to recap the difference.
Obviously, there's an area that probably needs to be addressed, and I think we should do it in short order.
Yeah, well, we were currently still at the, up around 30%.
Yeah, we're at 38 now.
30, yeah. Earlier in your presentation. You did a great job in presenting the numbers, Scott, I think, of where we are and where we're trying to be. So, you know, I would suggest, without Commissioner Osborne here tonight, that we take this as Commissioners, read it, review it, insert the issues that we brought about where the BOCs should be involved, and bring it back to Scott and our recommendations, incorporate it, and then move it forward on the 18th.
I would be in agreement to do that. Commissioner Hodges, do you have a comment? Yes, everyone's in agreement? Okay.
Wonderful, thank you.
And I think we have one more meeting. When's our next meeting?
Is that the 19th?
Oh, okay, yeah, it's right after, yeah, you're right.
No, yes, the meeting, it's always after the third meeting, so maybe we move it to the first.
So the action is the BOC sends comments back to Scott?
I think we should.
Yeah.
Review it and see what we all have to say individually. And what we'll do is, Mike will meet on the, our meeting on the 19th as a Subcommittee for Finance, and then do it the first meeting in June. Can you live with that?
Sure.
Okay, good.
Uh, first.
Is that what the day is? I don't, I don't, yeah, good. Yeah. All right, good.
Excellent. Are there any questions from the public on this? Good. Close that discussion and move on to item B, Spring House Road, preserved open space and naming rights. And I'll turn that over to interim manager Randy Coe.
Sure. So as the board and the public knows, we recently obtained a very generous and significant donation of preserved open space along Spring House Road and Route 22. After the donation was finalized, a request came in from, uh, the donor's attorney to our solicitor to gauge the interest of the board regarding the potential naming rights of this property. Mr. Davis would prefer the name Davis Smith Fields with a, which is a combination of Dave's last name and his wife's, Jody's maiden name. Both Dave and Jody have strong ties to the area here. Dave grew up in South Whitehall Township and graduated from Parkland High School. So having this named after him and his wife would mean a great deal to them. If tonight's discussion leads to the board being amenable to this idea, staff will begin working with their attorney and our solicitor to prepare a resolution for the board's consideration at an upcoming meeting. So at this point, I'll turn it over to the board to have a discussion about this, to see what everyone's thoughts and feelings are on this.
Other comments from the board?
I'll jump in. Um, I greatly appreciate the Davis family's donation to the township. Extremely generous. It's a beautiful piece of property. Having driven around our region, I see a lot of signs for preserved, um, farmland. It's a beautiful thing. And I'm, I'm just wondering, I, I'm in favor of putting the Davis Smith Fields on that sign. It would be very honoring of them for their donation. I wonder if we could also potentially put preserved farmland above it and maybe put their name underneath with South Whitehall or something along that to signify.
I think it'd have to be called preserved open space based off of the, um, agreement of sale that we did.
Preserved open space would be, yeah, yeah. I, I just think it would be nice to have, um, that type of language on that sign for the public's.
People will know what it is, that it's open space, yeah.
Yeah, go ahead. Jump in, guys.
Yeah, I, I agree about preserve, maybe it could be preserve farmland slash open space or and open space, but it's being farmed. Newhart is farming it now. They're going to farm it until they decide not to. So I think having both those titles, preserved farmland and open space, um, is appropriate. Just my opinion.
I guess if that's a legal question, we would need to.
Yes. Sorry, Jennifer, I'm looking down your way.
Yeah, so I need to refresh my memory about what the actual deed restriction said, and I of course can work with, um, Mr. Davis's attorney, who I believe is, um, watching remotely.
She's online.
If she needs to chime in at any point, feel free. But it's certainly something I can look into.
Any other comments?
This is, good evening, good evening, commissioners. This is Stephanie Cobal on behalf of Dave Davis, and I'd be happy to work with your solicitor, uh, to figure out what configuration works best within the confines of the deed restriction.
Excellent. We would, we would appreciate that help.
Fine with it. I have no problem.
Commissioner Oak, are you in agreement?
I concur.
It looks like we have an agreement.
I do agree with their naming on it as well. Yeah, absolutely.
Do we need any official action of the board?
Not at this moment. I think I have exactly what I was looking for tonight. So, uh, as I said in my opening statement here, what we'll do is we'll start working on a resolution, which would be formally required, uh, and we'll bring that back for the board's consideration here. Maybe as soon as May 19th, if we can get it all together, if not, certainly by June 1st.
Will the actual design of the sign be the township taking ownership of actually size and color and placement?
Yeah, I, I think it would be appropriate to have some sort of standard, um, for the sign at this location as additional farms or open space are preserved throughout the township. I think it's important to have consistency throughout. Uh, so we'll certainly have to, um, finalize a design for that and size, you know, material and, and all those sorts of things.
Very good. Any other comments? Any comments from the public? Very good. That is up. We've got one more agenda item, the Environmental Advisory Council. Um, this topic was brought up at our last meeting because there have been vacancies on this board and they have not met for quite some time. And I raised the question whether or not our board was interested in reviving and Randy, um, sent the board the revised, the bylaws, which were from 1974, 24, I believe. So I don't know what the, um, comments of the rest of the board are, but certainly my thoughts were, um, those are very old bylaws. I didn't have a whole lot of information to, to direct us as we move forward. And I was going to, um, put this out for discussion to see if we would schedule potentially a workshop in the next several months to talk about this as, you know, as well as some of our other boards and just kind of get our heads around where we're going because I didn't have enough information to make.
That's exactly where I'm at. So I, I prepared a few thoughts. So, um, if we all recall, we all recall, uh, Commissioner Osborne wrote a committee ordinance, which defines the overall South Whitehall Committee Government Structure Purpose Membership. Um, and we had a workshop back on February 9th. It was a multi-purpose workshop. Uh, but the first topic we, we reviewed this committee ordinance. We made some good progress. We, we got our heads around it, uh, but we reached a limit on what we could do. Uh, so we designated an action item. Um, we said, we need more history about these committees, you know, some, some which are up and running and very active, um, and some which are semi-active, uh, or just getting started, and some which haven't been active for quite a while. So the action item was to, to go back and look at what is the history grounded in? Uh, what are the ordinances or motions or resolutions that's, and bylaws that exist that say this committee should exist in the first place? And then what's its structure? What's its purpose? So David Manhart did that piece of work. That we, we, we need to come back and review it. Okay. So, because Brad did the ordinance, David did the homework assignment, and now we ought to all come back together. So just like Commissioner Kelly just said, I propose we schedule another workshop for, for this exact same purpose, right? Uh, I'd look at it top-down. Let's go back to, here's the committee ordinance that Commissioner Osborne proposed, and it's supposed to address all, all the township committees and, and, you know, look at them on a wholesale basis. What's their specific purpose? To the extent there's any gaps or overlaps, you know, address that issue. So, long-winded as usual. I agree with Commissioner Kelly. We show the workshop for this basic purpose.
So are we all in agreement to move forward with a workshop in the future? Okay. We'll, we'll circulate an email with dates and see what we can concur with staff and the board. One of the other topics that I, if we had time in that workshop, um, would be something that was mentioned both at our recent planning commission meeting, as well as our recent public safety commission meeting. There's, um, a development being proposed on Church Road sketch plan, and there was conversation about that collector road potentially. Right now, it's a partial one-way. Uh, there was some conversation about asking the developer to, um, set aside some easement to potentially look in the future to make a cul-de-sac there. And I just didn't understand the process of how that happens, um, and at what point the Board of Commissioners is involved in that process. And I also wondered, as I heard this discussion going around, um, there was some comments made that the township is also beginning to speak with PennDOT about this. Um, as we look at our entire township of roads and we're working on our comp plan, it raised a lot of questions in my mind of that process. I just don't understand, and I didn't know if the board would be interested in having some time to discuss that and hear from our CD department to understand how that works and how changing a road into a cul-de-sac, what's the process and, and how do we move forward?
I'm trying to figure out that process as well.
So. We'll do it together.
It, it, it was a concept because the intersection at the end of Church Road at Chapman's is a bad intersection. When vehicles get to that intersection, there's, you know, it's a hard view to the right and the potential for additional truck traffic is another reason to look at that intersection. So it was a, a concept, um, because they were looking at right-of-way improvements, and then that got us thinking about whether having a full collector road standard down that section made sense. So that kind of is where all of that stemmed from. And then the conversations with PennDOT were related to the Betterment Project. So they're doing Betterment work, so, um, reconfiguration of turning lanes and light signal timings between Walbert Avenue all the way past Warfield up into North Whitehall. So the conversation, that was just another thing that we talked to them about. You know, what impact would there be if we went through with this and, you know, how would that be incorporated into their project? So it was kind of just a FYI, you know, this is something we're thinking about. And, you know, once we figure out the process, we will certainly bring that to the board. The board is definitely involved in it. Um, it's not something that staff can just decide to do. It would be a board action.
So is that something that you could discuss with us in a workshop or even a comp plan meeting?
We, I, you know, and it could be appropriate at this transportation, comp plan session where we can talk about, you know, the process for improvements slash modifications to roads and things like that. You know, and, and now that we have Michael Baker on, we have some time to, you know, dig a little deeper into that piece of the, the puzzle there.
So clarification, at, at the very beginning, you, Commissioner Kelly, you referred to like one specific intersection, but your really, real question was about the process.
Well, this discussion of that particular road, changing from a road to a cul-de-sac, potentially raised the question in my mind, well, how does that work for the township? And what does that mean for the board and the different advisory boards? And how does that path move forward? I just didn't know. So.
Okay.
It is that one road, but overall I would like to be educated in general so that we are aware of.
Yeah, and, and there are other intersections and sections of roadway where this, the process, whatever it is, and, you know, whether we have to develop that process or it's already set by PennDOT, um, we'll do the research and figure that out. But it, in my mind, that process could apply to other intersections throughout the township.
So if, if, if that process question is over, uh, somebody asked, where is this Church Road intersection? Is this near the Wawa?
So it, it's right across from the new warehouse on Chapman's Road. The little cut-through that goes by PJ's.
On Walbert.
By PPL.
Oh, okay.
Down the road from here.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
By 84 lumber.
All right.
Or behind 84 lumber.
All right. Thanks. I won't, I won't go into.
There was a sketch plan that came in for the Potta property, which is the garage that's on, on that, on the right side of the road as you're heading towards Chapman's. So that's what.
There's a desire to make that church road that goes over those railroad tracks a cul-de-sac?
It was a concept.
Okay.
So, yes.
Wow. Okay.
Yeah. And, you know, there, there's, and Tony can probably jump in. There's a lot of engineering involved with it, and I don't know if traffic studies and, you know, we haven't really gotten into the nuts and bolts of how something like that would happen. But it was an opportunity to potentially get a developer to dedicate right-of-way, should that become an option in the future. Um, and that's where it stemmed from.
Okay, yeah. I, I think that the, the opportunity, I think, is what stemmed this whole thing because they were developing the property and it wasn't actually property. The land that we were asking about wasn't something that had a development on it. It wasn't a building or a parking lot that they have, had to change, but I think that our thought and our discussion with staff was there's going to be more traffic in this area because of the warehouses that are coming up. And we saw that as a potential, um, problem area. I think actually Brian brought it up in one meeting that there was a truck stop because it's hard to turn back to your right. So whenever we would see a potential area for improvement, we won't necessarily jump and say we have to do this, but, um, if we can grab land for the township that the developer is willing to give, it's always a benefit because now, if we don't use it for 50 years, we don't use it. But if for some reason we see something in the future that we can improve the safety of the township, it, it was good to grab at that moment. So it was general idea in terms of the implications to the surrounding roadways, it would definitely be a study because now all the cars that would go west on Church to Chapman's can't go that way. They would have to go up to the next intersection, take a left. So I think, um, just knowing all these different pieces take a lot more time. All we did is say, there's a potential for a problem. Maybe we just take some, some area that would help us in the future.
Okay.
Concept.
All right. If we're close with that, since we're in the area, um, I'd like to mention that, uh, a citizen has been, uh, asking me to have this subject addressed for about six months. Um, I probably mentioned it to, I don't know, Randy or Herb somewhere along the way, but, okay, here we are. The citizen states that, uh, I guess it's Chapman's, as, as you, uh, drive east past 84 lumber and you bend to the right, uh, where the Wawa will be on your left and the traffic signal with 309 will be in front of you. He states that that turn is, uh, too sharp, uh, for the 18-wheelers and, uh, something needs to be done about it. It's, it's, uh, dangerous. The last time I mentioned this to anyone, I'm, I'm going to approximate, maybe four months ago, when the person first brought this to my attention. And someone said, maybe it's Tony, someone said that there's an intention to straighten that road so that the bend won't be quite so severe.
That's correct. Associated with that development, there was an improvement to that bend. I don't necessarily recall the straightening, but what they're going to do is go wider towards the inside of that bend, so it gives more width to the road. So that is an associated improvement, uh, with that project. So it will happen. It's part of the resolution. It's part of their HOP plans, which they already have approved. So it will happen. They're under construction now.
So, and, and that, the curve, it, it's not straightening the curve. It, it's just adding shoulder so that the rear wheels of the tractor trailer don't go in the ditch. It's basically what it's for, so that the tractor trailer won't cross the yellow line. The idea of straightening that road is something that came up with PennDOT, um, related to the 309 Betterment Project, and then also with the Wawa scoping project. There's potential there, you know, and any, like, kind of what Tony said is, anytime we have an opportunity to make improvements, you know, there's typically a small time, uh, timeframe or a small window of opportunity to bring these concepts up to the PennDOT or developers. So when we see those opportunities, we bring them up and try and get some traction. So the straightening of this curve is one of those opportunities, um, that we're pushing forward and seeing what we can get done. I see, you know, there's kind of a coordination of potential timing with the Wawa development proposed and then with the Betterment Project. I see kind of the two projects working close, in close timing. So there may be an opportunity to work with both the developer and PennDOT to get some sort of straightening of that curve.
Okay, so, so to recap, so Tony said the, the warehouse project is, uh, the, the result is there will be shoulder widening.
Yes.
But not straightening.
Correct.
And David suggesting on a kind of Wawa or 309 Betterment, there could be widening.
Could be straight.
Straightening. I'm sorry.
Yes. And it, it's conceptual. I mean, right now it, it's purely conceptual and trying to see what it would take to make it happen.
Okay.
Is, is where that piece is.
Okay. So while we're on this type subject, I'll mention one more. One to two months ago, a citizen mentioned to me, I chatted with Randy about it one day. The citizen said, hey, I didn't think like 18-wheelers were allowed on, I think it's Snowdrift Road. Citizen described, I was traveling from like 309 to Randall's on whatever that road is, Snowdrift. Okay, so narrow, two-lane road. And said, two 18-wheelers nearly, you know, drove me off the road. I think Randy said, Randy, I don't know if you recall what you said. I, I think he said it wasn't posted and maybe didn't need to be posted.
So PennDOT, so when the Chapman's Warehouse came in, there was a proposed truck route. And PennDOT had a process for designating truck routes. While that was in process, PennDOT changed the regulations to allow tractor trailers on basically any road. And this is a topic, so you can restrict roads and there's a process for going through that restriction. And, you know, this is something that I see coming up in the comp plan is looking at, you know, better truck traffic or better truck routes through the township. Being looked at either in the comp plan or a separate plan that looks at that. And researching that process and then figuring out how best to implement something.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good evening.
Brian Hyde, 1273 Eck Road. I just wanted to, I don't mean to step on his toes and correct him. PennDOT didn't change the regulations. State laws changed it. So your elected officials changed that law to allow trucks on any state route unless posted. So, thank you.
Thank you for that correction.
Thank you, Brian.
Wow.
Michelle Hodges, did you have a comment? Yeah, they did.
Yeah, just a quick thing. I wanted to thank Commissioner Wolk for bringing that up because I actually came to Public Safety Commission about a year ago, year and a half ago maybe. And it was that exact same spot by 84 Lumber where it's that turn in the road. And a citizen had told me that she was driving towards 309 and a tractor trailer was coming towards her and it, it ran her off the road. And it was, there was snow on the ground. She had a Jeep. She went into the snowbank by 84 Lumber. She was able to get out. But at that time, I remember Public Safety saying that road would be worked on. There would be construction and so forth. So I assured her that, you know, it would be taken care of in time. But thank you for bringing that because that's not the only complaint I've heard as well. So, thank you.
Public Safety, we've heard it several times. It's not the first. It's been years and years. Trucks going in and out of 84, but it, it's just, yeah, it's been discussed.
Yeah. And also the, the stop sign at Chapman's in Blue Barn. I guess it gets run a lot. So, and, you know, that was brought up as well.
Are there any other commissioner comments?
Are we still under discussion?
We are still under direction discussion, yes.
Okay, could I start a new topic? I'm trying to be mindful. It's almost nine o'clock and I respect all your time, but I wanted to bring something up. I would really very much like to see a memorial here on campus for Howard Kutzler. As you all know, we lost Howard not too long ago. Howard was one of our township managers. Howard and I worked together as teenagers at the Northampton Pool. And actually tomorrow I'm going in front of Northampton Borough because our alumni for the Northampton Pool are going to either buy a bench or some apparatus for the pool and do it in honor of not only Howard, but the staff that we lost because there's been quite, we've had four losses, all in our age group, and it, it really hits you very hard. But I would like him remembered, not only at the pool. And I think it'll be a really great meeting because Judy, his mother, is on council at Northampton Borough. So I'm looking forward to that tomorrow night. But I would like something here on campus too. I'd like input from everybody. I would not mind taking the lead on it. I would just like something permanent on campus. This is where Howard was. This is where he worked. I'd love staff input. Is there something special that you would need or what you would want? I know I would be willing to contribute. I don't think it should come out of any kind of fund or anything like that. I think it should be donations. But I'm, I'm open to everything that, you know, what the commissioners have input with and what the public has input with. So I would really appreciate that.
Thank you for raising that, Commissioner Hodges. I know we had had a brief discussion. I think it was in an email shortly after Howard had passed away. I'm certainly very much in favor of moving forward with a project to put some type of a bench here at the township campus. And I'm not sure how that would move forward, but I will defer also to the rest of the board so we could get a consensus. But I think it would be a very honoring gesture for us to do that in his memory here.
I'm completely for it. Howard was actually the first township manager in my 25 years as Public Safety Committee that come to a safe, a public safety meeting. He was the first township manager that ever came. And it, it just, it was, it was, he was always welcome. It was always, I appreciate he had a lot of good comments too. So I'm, I'm all in favor of that, Monica. If you want to take the lead and I certainly would contribute myself and.
Great, sure.
Whatever you want to do.
And I'm open to ideas. I'm, I'm thinking, is there something in landscaping, like a fountain? Is there a bench? What could the staff use here? What does the staff need? I want it to be for staff, something that you would benefit from, something, just a quiet place where we could just remember, remember him.
I just have a comment I, I support it wholeheartedly. I only met Howard one time. And had, had, you know, just a, a short amount of time where he reflected on his view of being a township manager. And you're looking for a quote. He said, when he was in the role, "I'm here to serve." And to me, that, that said it all. That was absolutely perfect. He, he meant he was here to serve the board. He was here to serve the staff. He was here to serve the citizens. And I thought it was the most remarkable, most remarkable statement, you know, a township manager could make. And when I think of Howard, that's the way I'll always remember him.
He was a very good friend. So we'll toss that over to you, Randy. I think we have a unanimous board approval, support. And Monica, if you're willing to take the lead and maybe work with Randy on the particulars and report back to the board, I would certainly be willing to donate and we can, if we need to, maybe solicit funds through some of our township partners and friends who also knew Howard. I, I think we can certainly get this program off the ground without any township funds being expended.
Thank you so much.
I'd be happy to. Thanks.
Thank you, Randy.
Thank you.
I have one more thing. I'm sorry, this will be really quick. I promise, I promise. Going forward, I know we have a lot going on right now. Our staff is working so hard. There's so much going on. But in time, and my target is towards, more towards the end of the year, I would really love to start a historical society here in South Whitehall. We have so much history to be preserved. We have structures. We have those lime kilns, lime kilns. I'm sorry, I can't talk. There was just so many things that I would love to see preserved and pointed out. And I'm hoping to go forward with that sometime this year. I don't want to burden anybody now, but I wanted to bring it up during discussion and certainly discuss it more when Commissioner Osborne is present. So that's it.
Commissioner Hodges, I think that would be a great addition to our workshop as well. I mean, that's something that we can cover under that discussion of boards and maybe get some framework for that committee to get started. I think it's a great idea.
We can also talk about that at the Planning Commission Workshop because Historic Resources is a piece of that. And it's actually one of the items in the Implementable Actions, so.
I think it all comes together really well, but I just didn't want to throw it out there and we have to do it now. We don't. But, you know, as the year goes on, I'd like to see it progress. Okay, thank you.
Well, one piece of history a resident asked me about over the weekend at an event was, where is the original dedication plaque for the township that was in our old building? It is not hanging in the lobby and someone asked me why not? And could we retrieve it and hang it for the history of the township?
Off the top of my head, I'm not sure. I can certainly start looking for it.
That's something we can look for. All right. Thank you for, for this discussion. Moving on, we are at the courtesy of the floor. It's one more opportunity for anyone in the public to address the board, if there's anyone who'd like to speak this evening. Okay, seeing and hearing none, we'll move on to Agenda Item 14. I need a motion to authorize payment of invoices and disbursements. Is there a second? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries four to zero. Agenda Item 15, Executive Session. The board will meet in executive session this evening immediately after following adjournment to discuss personnel matters. I do need a motion to adjourn. So move, I mean, sorry, second. Everyone in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Very good. Thank you, everybody.